I want to call the Charlotte City Council meeting.
Mayor.
Today, the board, and everyone being welcome. And thank you to those of you who are here this afternoon.
Thank you, Mike.
Let me try to turn on the microphone. I'm sorry about that. So, good evening and welcome, everyone, to our meeting. Tonight, we're going to receive the manager's proposed budget presentation, which outlines the plans for advancing the strategic priorities adopted and approved by council. This presentation provides an opportunity for our community to learn more about the investments plan that we have for our community, members and our city. Tonight is just the introduction to the proposal. After tonight, we will have the opportunity to review and inquire and to be prepared for May 13th budget public hearing, where members of our community will have the opportunity to speak to us to provide feedback as well on the budget. So, we are really excited. If you wish, if you're watching us now and you wish to speak on the budget on the 13th of May, please call the city clerk's office and sign up. You can do this online or by phone. Following the public hearing, the council will convene on May 20th for the budget adjustments meeting. We have an entire process that we've gone through over a number of years, and the process primarily includes asking for things that may need to be added or changed as a result of the budget, and we do that by basically having votes and making adjustments as we make those votes. So, straw votes really, really mean that at some point, as you get six votes, it's in the budget, and without six votes, it's not. So, I want to let everyone, remind everyone that it's important to note that we have to adopt our budget no later than June 30th by state law, and the budget adoption here is, I'm sorry, by the end of the year, and for us, that will be the budget adoption vote is scheduled for June the 10th. I want to highlight that we understand that meaningful change requires dedicated individuals committed to public service, and I want to thank every person that touched this budget, every department, and the work that you've done to make it possible for the manager to have this recommendation to us today is truly something that we recognize and are really glad that you're participating in. But before I turn it over to the manager, we'll go around and have introductions, and we, will I start over here with our deputy clerk?
Ariel Smith, lead city clerk.
Good evening, Renee Johnson, and I'm honored to represent District Four.
Good evening, I'm Marjorie Molina, represent District Five.
Good evening, Diplo Ashmara, at large.
Good evening, Dante Anderson, mayor pro temp, District One.
I'm Vi Lous, and I serve as mayor.
Marcus Jones, city manager. Malcolm Graham, city councilor, District Two.
Tara, we're going to skip Ed and come back to him.
Okay, Tara Bacard is six.
LaWanna Mayfield, council member at large.
Patrick Baker, city attorney.
Julia Martin, city manager's office. And I think we know that the manager's here, but I'd like to call on Ed Driggs for a...
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ed Driggs, District Seven. I wanted to let my colleagues on council know that even though we're not having committee report outs today in TPD, we did discuss the text amendment on conservation that the staff has proposed to us and on which they want to have a vote on the 20th. You may know that the zoning committee actually deferred any action on it, so we were talking about whether or not to proceed with that date on the 20th, and the, I think unanimous opinion, it wasn't a vote, but the unanimous opinion of the group was that we should proceed in order to stop that unintended development. So, if you have any questions about it or don't feel that you would be ready on the 20th, please talk to Allison or me and just be aware that that's coming. That's really all I wanted to let you know right now. Thank you.
With that last report and the information that we need, now it is time for us to turn this over to the city manager for his presentation. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, mayor, and members of council. So, I'm going to go into a little different territory just to start off with before I go into the proposed budget that I will recommend to you tonight. I think it's extremely important to recognize what has happened in our city over the course of the last week, and for us to remember the four members of the law enforcement community that we've lost, Sam Filoche, William Elliott, Joshua Iyer, and Thomas Weeks. So, I've been here for eight years, and it's not the first time, as a manager, that I've lost one of our law enforcement officers. I've never seen a city pull together like Charlotte. And so, what I just want to say is acknowledge the families today, and tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day, and the next week, and the next month, and the next year, and let's not forget, the chief and I talked this morning, and just the outpour of support, the resilience of the city, things that happened this weekend, the festival, soccer game, the Knights game, and just how so many folks in the community just came out to say, "Thank you, and we support you." So, I just love the city, love our 9,000 employees, and how we hang together, and I'm just proud to be the city manager. So, Charlotte is, I would say, a unique place when you start to really think about our city. We're the second fastest-growing city in the country. While we're the 15th largest, we're the second fastest-growing city, and that's from a 2020 to 2022 time period. So, we go and we visit cities, but we're growing faster than Phoenix, than Austin, than Denver. And we're somewhat unique in the sense that many of the enterprise funds that are part of the city are not necessarily parts of cities in other places. In other words, the airport, or the water system, or the transit system. These enterprise funds provide services to the region, not just to charlatans in Mecklenburg County. And we do all this with the highest bond ratings and strong financial management. So, kudos to this unique city and this wonderful team. We've managed through challenges and uncertainty, and I will say that some of the pressures that we've had in the past have been stabilizing the workforce. It's great to see so many of the employees in the room tonight. Historic inflation, you know, growth, tackling that and meeting service expectations. And we've done a lot. Organizational reductions and realignments over the course of the last six years resulted in $40 million of savings. I believe we use the federal stimulus funds, the CARES and the ARPA funds, better than any city in the country, making sure that we use them for one time, as opposed to having problems once these funds dry up. And one thing that's important is when we start to think about the revenue that comes in, about 70% of all the revenue we collect in the general fund is related to property tax and sales tax, and those are places and spaces that we haven't really ventured into over the course of the last few years. I do want to set the stage and talk about the 12 largest cities in North Carolina and how we compare and we benchmark ourselves against those cities. So, in the light blue, you'll see the cities with the population of more than 250,000 people. And when we start to think about our property tax rate, we are the lowest of all of these cities, would be 13, including us, by a mile. And when you start to look at this, we haven't raised taxes, property taxes, in the last five years, where you have Raleigh, who's raised them three times, Durham, three times, Winston-Salem, four times, and Durham, three times. And I know we're not those cities, but I think it's important to set the stage for how we've managed the city with the strong ratings and been able to keep our tax rate low. Where I'm going to start where I ended last year, and we talked about, we were at this inflection point in the city, and how will we go about beyond FY '24? Whether we're talking about a decline in services, or kind of keep chugging along where we are, are we able to think about providing more, given the constraints we have around the revenues? You guys have been great. Each January, we have our annual strategy meeting, and it's the, you set the stage, it's a playbook, it's the things are important to you, and you've been consistent with these key initiatives like affordable housing, our corridors of opportunity, Safe Charlotte, mobility, what we do around arts and culture, small minority business development, the digital divide, as well as CAPP and our 2040 plan. And what we've done in return, as you've been able to be consistent with what these key initiatives are, we look at this as really three buckets. We develop, we invest, and then we implement. And so, two key initiatives that I'm excited about over this next year are workforce development strategy, now small business strategy, both of which should be completed in this calendar year. But as we're starting down the pathway on those two areas, you'll see, as we go to the implementation, that some of the other areas like Safe Charlotte and our corridors of opportunity, we are far beyond just the initial phase. Okay, so, this budget, all in, is a $4.2 billion budget. When we start to think about the general fund, which I'll focus on for most of this presentation, we'll book in it with the enterprise funds, we're at the beginning, and I'll do it at the end also. So, the general fund grows by 7.7%, and that's where our starting point is. Each year, we have budget principles, and we have not deviated from those budget principles in this proposed budget. So, in other words, we have a two-year lens, we just don't start with FY '25. We look at FY '25 and FY '26 because we don't want to do things in FY '25 that cause us a lot of pain in FY '26. So, the budget that I'm presenting to you tonight is structurally balanced, ongoing revenues matching ongoing expenditures, and as we move into FY '26, which ends June 30 of '26, which is two years from now, what you will see is that, absent a salary increase, that's a structurally balanced budget also. So, we always start with our employees, that's the foundation for our success. And it's important, when we start to think about our employees, it's almost like we have almost three work streams. We have public safety, we have operations, we have administrative. So, when we think about public safety, some of the things that we had to do were around recruitment and retention, the pay plan structure changes, and any new incentives. We had multiple meetings with the public safety pay plan members, including today. Operations, you have a bit different. We've had multiple meetings with our employees that are in the operations, and they have certain other challenges around increasing minimum pay, career path opportunities, and new incentives. And for the administrative staff, it had a lot to do with feedback we received was flexible work options and career opportunities. So, we're going to continue to support career growth in the city. Last year's budget, we talked about a special assistant around workforce development, and we're starting to see the fruit of that labor already. We're starting to combine what we do internally so that we can be stronger internally as well as externally. So, we're continuing the prepaid tuition assistance and career coaching. And prepaid tuition assistance is so important because if you don't have the money to begin with, it doesn't help you to get reimbursed for something you don't have. So, what we've done is we trust our employees, and as they want upward mobility, we have continued the prepaid tuition and career coaching assistance. And Water, just to give a shout out to Angela Charles, we have so many folks that are participating from Water, so we can learn a lot from the Water system. And we also have almost 20 apprenticeships citywide. So, compensation increases, what we're doing for this budget, and again, I want to start off by talking about what we've done during the pandemic, what we're doing now, and what we're trying to do in the future. Hourly employees, you may recall, in FY '23, we had an 8% increase, and FY '24, a 6% increase. In this budget, I'm proposing a 5% increase for our hourly employees on top of the eight and the six, but also a minimum of $3,280 for our lowest-paid employees. What that really does is it allows our lowest-paid employees really to get closer to a 7% increase. And what you'll find is there are about 1,200 employees that will get 6% or above, so I don't want you to just lock into the 5%. What we're doing is something similar to last year, and it helps us with compression. Our salaried employees, what we have is a 4% merit pool, much like the current fiscal year. And we continue to, we continue to have additional incentives such as 2.5% if you have a CDL license, which is related to your job function, as well as, we talked about this a few years ago, shift differential pay of 2.5% for second and third shift. And we continue to have all-access passes for all of our employees, so that's whether it's the bus or the train, something that would cost over $1,400, you get it for $32, not $32 a month, but $32 flat. We're also going, I'm recommending that we increase the minimum pay to $23 an hour. If we start to go back to 2018, our minimum pay was $13,500, which basically results in about $28,246. It's real tough to talk about affordable housing and upward mobility if we're not looking internally at how we pay our employees. So, this is a 70% increase from that period of time, where our minimum pay for our 40-hour-a-week employees will be $23 an hour, which turns out to be $47,840 a year. I will say that as we address some of the compression issues and have that bare minimum, what you'll find is that our employees that are with us today, with those adjustments, they'll make just under $50,000 a year by November. So, those are our lowest-paid employees would make close to $50,000 a year by November for those 40-hour-a-week employees. So, compensation is important, but also there's access to information. So, what do we learn from our employees? They want financial support, so we have a coordinator who will help them with understanding how to navigate for what are the different incentives or programs that are in the city and outside the city. We're adding new financial planning resources that provides employees access to a certified financial planner, and we're having, for the first time, an emergency loan program. You don't want something like a vehicle repair or something in your house to cause you to fall back as it relates to trying to keep up in terms of upward mobility. And we're having an employee advocate, and this employee advocate will have a role, a formal role, involved in workplace complaint resolution and pre-termination hearings. Also, what we heard from our employees is they'd love to live in the city, so we need to make sure that there are opportunities for our employees to live in the city. And we've had the House Charlotte program, which provides $30,000 in assistance citywide. But what we're doing is we're doubling down on the House Charlotte Plus, which provides $80,000 for assistance in purchasing a home anywhere in a corridor, and we're setting aside funds for not only city employees, but county employees, as well as CMS, and that's part of the NESS Commission recommendations. We're also launching a new initiative in partnership with CMS, where we want to create a pipeline of students who can graduate and then come work for the city of Charlotte. And I would hope that other employers would do the same. So, we're going to have 17 CMS high school graduates come right into those city jobs, starting at $47,480 upon graduation. We're leveraging our ARPA funds. We, you approved 4.1 million previously. We have $5 million that are remaining in ARPA funds that are around workforce development. So, we're looking forward to that workforce development strategic plan that will be finished this year, this calendar year. Remember, we talked about, we have salary employees, the folks that are hourly, and let's talk a little bit about public safety and specifically police. We knew that 2021 and 2000 through 2023 were going to be challenging because in the early '90s, there was an influx of police officers in cities across the country. And when they got to that 30-year mark, they retire. So, not anything that we did that was not good, but we just knew that we were going to lose a bunch of police officers. Chief Jennings falls into that category, and we're fortunate that he has not retired. So, what did we do? What we did was we had a series of compensation changes, we changed recruitment efforts, and we added another recruit class. So, what you will see, the key here, is that as we were losing more officers than we were bringing in, for example, in '21, the delta was a negative 28 officers that left the system versus coming in. '22, minus 52. '23, which was the peak of retirements, 91, we had, you know, minus 8. What we're seeing right now is through all of these efforts, is that in 2024, we believe that we're going to have more than 200 new officers come in, twice as much as what we would have had in '21 or '22, and we see that same pattern going forward in '25 and '26. So, we are hopeful that we have now gotten past that 30-year mark with the folks who came in in the early '90s. But we're continuing with that plan. And for the past two budgets, what we were able to do, which you approved, was to increase police officer pay, and that was a part of a recruitment and retention program. The last two years, starting pay increased by 23%, and top pay over the last two years increased by 14%. If we start to look at that, what does that mean? So, top pay for a police officer today with a four-year degree is $99,811, and starting pay for a police officer with a four-year degree is $62,911. What we're doing on top of that, we are increasing between 5% to 7.5% increases for police officers on top of what we've done the past two years. And maybe something that a lot of people have not been familiar with, but back in 2011, as a budget-saving initiative, police moved from a 14-day pay cycle to a 28-day pay cycle. It's been one of their top issues for a while. I am recommending that we move back to that 14-day pay cycle because a budget savings back in 2011 doesn't really vibe with what we're trying to do today with our sworn. But we're also doing more than just compensation, we're investing and reducing the workload of our police officers. The Safe Charlotte Initiative talked a lot about areas such as CARES team and civilian crash investigators. In this budget, there's funding for both. So, when we start to think about the civilian crash investigators, which are 16 of them, what they're going to be able to do is basically allow our sworn to get back to other areas of policing, and the value of that is about 25,000 hours per year, or the equivalent of 12 full-time police officers. We're also taking the CARES team, and we are adding an additional team, as well as expanding the hours and a new geography. And when we start to think about responses to calls, a couple of years ago, actually October of 2022, we had a number of issues with trying to address 911 calls within that first 10 seconds. So, what we're doing is we've done a lot to help with this compensation with the pay that I mentioned earlier, but actually recruiting techniques. And we have really gotten that call response, close to 85% of all the calls are answered within 10 seconds. A little bit less than that 90, but very different than where we were in October 2022. We believe by adding 15 telecommunications and building out the call center with renovations that we can get back to that 90% of the call, excuse, the calls being answered, 90% within 10 seconds. Same thing with Fire. All firefighters in the current fiscal year receive between 5% and 8% in terms of a compensation increase, and council during the budget adjustments made sure that for similar roles in police and fire, that there was no more than a 5% separation in terms of compensation. In FY '25, we're going to build on that and have up to 7.5% compensation increase for our firefighters. But we're also adding 72 positions, 57 firefighters, because as we're building these stations that are coming online, as we're addressing the growth, we need to staff up Fire also. We talked about inspections last year, we're adding 12 inspectors and three civilians. I also, every employee for the city of Charlotte is in the North Carolina local government retirement system, with the exception of Fire. So, Fire has its own independent retirement system. What I'm recommending in this budget is to put more into the retirement system than what we had originally planned, because I have a bit of concern about the funding status. But I'm also recommending in this budget that we have the Board of Trustees, CFRS Board of Trustees, work with the staff to see how we can come up with a funding strategy to raise that funding status. to raise that funding status for fire. We have a hundred and seven million dollars of fire infrastructure program, and that includes new infill stations and replacement stations throughout the city. The capital plan that I'm presenting tonight has fifty-eight, fifty-eight point five million dollars from FY twenty five to FY twenty nine to help finish building off these stations. You may remember, five or six years ago, it was police stations that were building, and now we're building a number of fire stations to help us as it relates to responding to calls. I will say that I believe we've created a culture and environment where Charlotte is a good place to work, and that's important when you start to focus on your employees. Now, you have a number of key initiatives that we talked about during the annual strategy meeting, and I wanted to cover them just quickly. And some specifically Affordable Housing, Arts and Culture, Corridors of Opportunity, Minority Women and Small Business, Strategic Energy Action Plan, and Safe Charlotte. So we'll start off with affordable housing. The last three bond cycles, we've had more funds in the last three bond cycles than we had in the previous nine bond cycles. So if you start to think about this, a hundred and fifty million from twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, and twenty-two bond cycles versus a hundred and ten million from the beginning, which is roughly two thousand all the way up to the twenty sixteen bond cycle. And in that, these last three bond cycles, we've created six thousand five hundred units in sheltering. So we think that we have done a very good job with the trust fund and to the point where normally we have a spring, RFP, but we've run out of money. So that leads me to recommending that we increase the bond in twenty twenty-four to a hundred million dollars. And in that, we've shown that we can do fifteen million, we've shown that we can do fifty, we've shown that we can do fifty when the private sector comes in and adds fifty to it also. I think what's important is as we go through this, and there's a lot that's going on with the NESS Commission, there's a lot that's going on with the Housing and Community Safety Commission, to make sure that we're maximizing the use of these funds and we're able to get more than just housing, but the opportunity for upward mobility within our community. We also, as one of your key areas, key initiatives, has been the implementation of the playbooks for the six corridors. And I would say that, you know, even the West Boulevard corridor predates many of the corridor playbooks because it was just an idea. And then the idea was also embraced by the other five corridors. So we're finally to the point where we have all the playbooks done, and so it's time to act. We had ten million dollars planned in the FY twenty five budget for our corridors of opportunity. I could tell from the conversations during the annual strategy meeting and subsequent budget meetings that this was not going to fly. So what I'm recommending is to triple that and have thirty million dollars in this budget for our corridors of opportunity, twenty-five million of it being related to the CIP and five million in what we call Pago. And we've been very successful with these initiatives in the past. Also, supporting arts in our ecosystem. This goes back to twenty twenty one, when the mayor put together an ad hoc council committee, and it was response to instability and the lack of funding in the arts and culture ecosystem. Workplace giving had gone down. Pre-recession peak was ten point seven million dollars for these organizations. By the time we were at twenty twenty one, that ten point seven went down to four point three million dollars. Something had to be done, mainly because a lot of these organizations are in facilities in which we have debt on and that we pay debt on these facilities, and we couldn't let the lights go out. So we started off with a request that if the city put in four million, could the private sector also put in four million over a period of time? The private sector, I guess, took our opening bid and raised it by two and came in with six million over a three-year period for eighteen million. City council matched that eighteen million, and we had thirty-six million dollars to put into this ecosystem over a three-year period. Actually, the private sector came in with an extra five million dollars. So it became an opportunity for the city to develop a plan with the private sector to see what we would do after that three-year period. We're at the end of the three-year period, and my recommendation is to have eleven million dollars, which is three times the city's pre-COVID amount put into arts and culture, so that we can not only stabilize this ecosystem, but to make the ecosystem grow. So we're carrying forward the previous ASC and infusion fund organizations with limited exceptions. There are few organizations that are outside of the city that would be funded by the county. And what we would do is add nine million dollars to these organizations, much like it has been done in the past. There's a great opportunity for collaboration with the county that they too may be able to fund some of these organizations for their educational efforts. So that's important, that we would not only just stabilize the arts and culture ecosystem, but now have a pathway forward for them to grow. And then what we found also is that individual artists and organizations are extremely important to the ecosystem, too. So we would, I'm recommending that we set aside two million dollars of this eleven for that. I think it's important that when all of the dust settles and we see the city's contribution and the county's contribution, that you will see that it is something that's good for what we would call the bigs, the smalls, the mediums, those that, the Alana groups, as well as the individual artists and other organizations. And so I believe that this is what you wanted when you said, let's change the trajectory of arts and culture in our community. We're also very excited to be a part of Bloomberg American Sustainable Cities. We're one of twenty-five cities nationwide that have been brought in. It represents about ten million people across the country. And Bloomberg has been very clear. It is, how can we supercharge three of our existing focus areas? So the concept is how might we deliver on the most equitable, sustainable infrastructure and clean energy investment in Charlotte's history while building Blackwell? It's made it very clear that is how they're going to help us with an innovation team with three staff and technical assistants. We're also implementing our MWSV programs and policies. They, you may recall that recently, when the city put two million dollars in to launch Charlotte's Small Business Growth Fund, that actually helped pull in another thirty-eight million dollars, so that forty million dollars over a four-year period are going to help two thousand businesses, with seventy percent of those businesses being estimated to be businesses of color. The Charlotte business in inclusion, what we're doing is focusing on MWSV subcontractors, see how we can get them to be primes. And in business development, we continue to support AMP Up and Next Charlotte that is graduating companies, and we're seeing some wonderful things happening in our ecosystem. It wouldn't be a budget presentation without talking a bit about CAAP. It's a fabric of our organization. Sometimes you look into the budget and try to find a line that says CAAP. I don't think that's the way we look at it anymore. It's much like the corridors of opportunity is what we do. And we're starting to get accolades, ranked in the top twenty percent by the American Council for Energy Efficient Economy. And we have an A minus in, you know, sometimes you don't want an A minus, but for disclosure insight action for a superior citywide sustainability efforts when the national average is a B. So I'll take that, that A minus any day of the week. We're also implementing the existing plan while adding a new focus to Safe Charlotte. Much of the work is being done in the referral process, emphasis on age seventeen and below, property and violent crime, at-risk youth, first-time offenders, and repeat offenders. And so this budget sets aside three point five million dollars for the work that will come out of the committee, and it should be consistent with what are the recommendations of the committee. But we're also having opportunities today in our corridors of opportunity with their Mayor's Youth Employment Program, where we're having a hundred and fifty my-up individuals in the corridors this year, a three-time increase from the summer of twenty twenty-three, as well as new partnerships with Teach for America in our corridors. As we start to talk about alternatives to violence, as well as our hospital-based violence intervention program, which we call Boost, we're finding that for every one dollar that the city invests, it's worth three dollars that comes from leveraging the federal government, the private sector. And I would have to say kudos to Representative Alma Adams for bringing home significant dollars as it relates to our alternatives to violence, and also for the recent award from ATRIM II, the Boost program that is the hospital-based initiative. We talk about safety, and you can't talk about safety without having a conversation about what's happening in Uptown. We used to always look at this as a three-legged stool where we, or three pillars, the quality of life, the public realm, and economic development. While there are programs that are happening in Uptown, and I, kudos to Chief Jennings as they've been able to reduce violent crime through certain programs. I think it's important to have this five million dollar investment as we start to think about the built environment also and quality of life that we have in Uptown. And so I'm going to do my best, Teresa Smith, and read from right to left, which she always confuses me when she does that. But this is where we have been with mobility. And if you start off going right to left, June twenty twenty-two, we had our strategic mobility plan, and I think the room more or less said, where is this thing going? And then a year later, we had the strategic mobility plan, the blueprint that really started to talk about areas. And then most recently, April twenty twenty-four, we had our strategic investment areas where we started to talk about those sixteen bundles, and it almost became, I guess, a framework for how we talk about other growth issues that we have in the city. So it took us a while, but we're feeling, we're in a good place. So if we start to talk about the February budget workshop, we had a steady state of two hundred and ten million dollars in each bond cycle. We did that years ago because we wanted some certainty in what we could afford. And what we could afford may be very different than what we wanted. But it did allow us to have this fiscally constrained opportunity as we move forward. And in the annual strategy meeting, we came back and said, well, that capacity had grown from two-ten to two-twenty-eight, but also there were some pulls on that capacity because of inflation. And as I've, you know, talked about earlier, when we start to talk about this blueprint and what we're doing in mobility, we have these sixteen focus areas, we call them strategic investment areas, and we also have the corridors of opportunity. So while this is just a bunch of bubbles that you have right now, I think here's the key with it. We need to be, make sure that we're focused on investments that can maximize what we invest, make sure it's scalable, make sure it's measurable, make sure it's adaptable. You guys fell in love with some of the folks who visited us during the annual strategy meeting, well, we have a couple of them under contract. And our concept is simply this, we're going to put two million dollars aside to look at innovation pilots throughout the city, and that is micro-transit, mobility hubs, vehicle-to-infrastructure communications, transportation demand strategies. How can we take technology and do something different? And maybe more importantly, how can we get projects shovel-ready so the community can say, okay, we're not going to put something on a shelf and wait for six to eight years? So again, and as Councilmember Bakari would say was the punchline, okay? So if we look at this, we can stay where we are at that two hundred and ten million, two-twenty-eight, but hopefully you feel you have an appetite for some of the things that I've shown you up to this point. So we have a couple of options, and I still believe when we start to think about a transportation initiative that's bold and is for this region, I do believe the sales tax is the best way to go. When you start to think about the sales tax, thirty percent of the people that actually pay the sales tax do not live in Mecklenburg County. So there, there are different ways that the sales tax can benefit all of us, but we have to come together as a region to be able to do that. Today, I'm suggesting a one-time infusion that's not sales tax-related. So my proposal is to take that two hundred and ten million dollar planned bond and have it moved up to four hundred million dollars. And we do that a couple of ways. One is, I call it pulling forward capacity. Remember, we have two hundred and twenty-eight million dollars of capacity in each bond for the next ten, twenty, thirty years. So pull some of that capacity forward, add some revenue into it, and let's see what we can do for this upcoming bond to show the community that we're ready to do more. So what's in this upcoming bond? That four hundred million. So the corridors of opportunity, as I mentioned earlier, we had ten million planned. I'm recommending we add fifteen million to that. That would be the highest on record for corridors of a bond. I mentioned that housing, fifty is what's planned. I'm recommending that it doubles to a hundred, again, the highest on record. And then for the transportation, we had a hundred and fifteen million planned. I recommend that we move it up to two hundred and thirty-eight million, which is a hundred and twenty-three million more than planned, and that two hundred and thirty-eight million would be the highest on record for any transportation bond. Let's do a deep dive into what's going on. So if we go and compare that two-ten to where we're going at this four hundred million, bicycles was at eight million, we're continuing that at eight million. Congestion mitigation was at ten million, we're continuing it at that. But what we're doing is, as we start to think about Vision Zero, we had four million planned, I'm recommending twenty million. So that's where this two-ten is growing to the four hundred. We think that Vision Zero is a great investment, and this will be five times more than what was planned. Same concept with sidewalks. Sidewalks, we only had twenty million dollars planned. I'm suggesting that we move that back up to fifty million, which matches the highest that's on record. That's two point five times what was planned. And the new program, setting aside fifty-five million dollars, recommending for these strategic investment areas, those sixteen areas, we had talked about, you know, it may cost you anywhere from twenty to twenty-five million for any area. But if you put that on top of sidewalks and on top of congestion mitigation and what we have set aside for the corridors, I really believe that we can move some projects forward faster, and we're going to change the way that we deliver projects. Now, I'm looking at future bond cycles for the twenty twenty-six bond cycle. I'm recommending two hundred and forty-three point five million, the same for the twenty twenty-eight, again, pulling some of that capacity forward. And by the time we get out of these last three bond cycles, we'd go back to something that is closer to the two-ten, but not two-ten, a little bit more, two hundred and twenty million in perpetuity. So how do we implement the vision? I think it's important to talk about, and we did this at the retreat, that I believe there's great value for our residents because the cost of service, and that is when you take the city and county services combined, their taxes, the water sewer, stormwater, vehicle fees, solid waste services, and recycling, Charlotte is about fifteen hundred dollars less than the next large city on that list. So there's value for the services that we provide. And again, we've already talked about our property tax history and where we are. So what I'm recommending is a one point five cent property tax increase, okay? Nine tenths of that will be in the, nine tenths of the penny, nine tenths of a penny will be in the general fund, and virtually all of that is for public safety. We've gone back and looked at public safety increases over the last twenty years. This would be the largest, and this is helping fund that. And then there is a point three cent increase that we're moving right into the CIP and pulling some funds forward or some capacity forward, and then a point three cent for arts and culture for a total of one point five. So what does that mean? That's roughly four dollars and forty-eight cents a month for the typical homeowner, or roughly about fifty-four dollars a year. Also, there's seven million dollars left in ARPA interest that is not programmed in this budget whatsoever. My recommendation is, as the council decides on how to use this remaining My recommendation is, as the council decides on how to use this remaining $7 million of ARPA interest, that it continues to be for one-time issues and not ongoing. And serving our region, I said that I would book in this presentation with the enterprise funds and how unique we are as a city. And so there, you know, some things, and you know these things, we start to think about aviation, and we have, it's worth 5% of the state's GDP, it's the seventh busiest airport in the world, and we had 53-plus million passengers in 2023. It's not a small thing. Water and stormwater, it's important to note that we serve more than 1 million customers per day in multiple jurisdictions. It serves four counties and four cities. It's not just the city of Charlotte, so thank you, Angela, there. And then, I don't know if Brent's even in the room, but Charlotte area transit, I just give kudos to Brent Cagle for stepping in. You know, there's 12 million people that are served annually. Reliability is up. A year ago, you know, 10% of the trips were missed, we're less than 1% of the trips in terms of vacancies. Vacancies have been cut in half, recruitment's up, communications better, morale's better. And to have enterprise funds like these that are operated by the city that are exceptional, I think that's kudos to the entire team. The fees, as we look at the fee increases, solid waste fee is going to go up basically 78 cents a month, the water fee roughly $4.30 a month, and stormwater 47 cents a month. So while this is an infusion in the 2024 bond, I think it's putting us on the right trajectory, this 1.5 cent increase. And this comes to time now, Mayor and Council, where I turn this over to you. It's your budget. We stand ready to answer any questions that you have over the next weeks. And I also want to thank Team Charlotte, all of the assistant city managers, all the department heads, especially our Budget Director, Ryan Bergman, and our CFO, Teresa Smith. It's almost a year-round endeavor to put a budget together, and we believe we've captured the essence of some of the issues that you've brought to our attention over the last year. So Mayor, with that said, it's your budget, and I appreciate the time that you've given me tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. And this is our process for now. You will get a copy of the deck from the Budget Office, and so you don't have to worry about kind of keeping what all the deck and the slides were. But I think what's most important here is that I believe that you've given us a ton of information, and on so much of the work that we're doing, you're getting the budget books now, but I believe that we really need to take some time to read, absorb, review, inquire. And the inquiry is very, very important because these are the things that if we are going to continue to do this work and start thinking about what we want to do and accomplish, we will have meetings, and you can see that we'll have the public hearing on the 13th, but there will be meetings for the council at any point in time for review of the budget. And we'll be working with our, your exec, what are they called, the group of people that schedule our lives for us? Constituent relations will get together with budget, and we'll have these meetings assigned. They are open and public meetings, but there's an opportunity, as you begin to think about what's in the budget and what you want to do. I find that it's really, really great, helpful if you have a change that you want to have, that you get the staff to work with you on how to, you know, what you want to do, making sure that it's consistent with what you want to achieve. So that's what I think is our next step. So we've got some time. Our budget public hearing, hearing from the public before we make our own decisions, and then we'll have budget adjustments in between that, so we'll have time for the smaller, for the meetings with the budget team and the manager as well. So with that, Mr. Jones, I want to say thank you to, and amplify your comments to have all of the folks that work in our community or for our community here today to hear what the recommendations are, the opportunity to actually, I always kind of remind people that the people that are in this room are also often our constituents. And so it's great to have you come in. I think you're great ambassadors for what we do, and we talk to people about. I especially want to say thank you to the group that works on this, Ryan, your team, and Teresa, your team. Terrific. And so with that, we will take this document. We're going to walk through it. You're going to have an opportunity to make calls and comments with the team that's put this together. And with that, we are adjourned on the budget presentation meeting. So thank you very much, everyone, and look forward to May 13th is our next opportunity. Mr. Jones, thank you.